If you'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, at this time I'd like to call upon Commissioner Mike Mesmer to lead us in an indication.
Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this thy our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Spirit of God.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody to our City Commission meeting. We've got some special guests in the audience that we're going to recognize here in a minute. Item one on the agenda is the public announcement of events. They're calling our public information officer. They were out to tell us what's coming up.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners, City Manager, and Mayor. Tomorrow evening, there's going to be a very important, very interesting informational session at the Public Library. Anyone that's looking for a job, whether they already have one or perhaps don't have a job, is welcome. Ruben Viejas from Workforce Solution is going to be there with a special workshop entitled "Resume Preparation and Interview Skills." It'll be from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the conference room. There are still seats available, even though it says in the small print there's a limit of 24 attendees, but you can sign up by contacting the reference desk at either (216) 5821 or the volunteer coordinator at (216) 5809. And Mr. Viejas is going to focus on keywords for specific jobs. So no matter what career or job you're looking for, he can help line you up with the keywords that people that are hiring will be looking for. And one of the most important things he's going to work on is to provide those who attend with website resources. So instead of just Googling and randomly looking for jobs or information about how to obtain a job, he'll help you cut the corners and pinpoint what you're looking for. So that should be a real interesting presentation. I also wanted to pass along a quick reminder that on August 9th, there's going to be a neighborhood clean sweep on North Parkwood from 77 Sunshine Strip to 25th Street, and that will include Revere Lane and Laurel Drive. From 8:00 AM till noon, the meeting place will be Revere Lane and North Parkwood. That is District 3 for Commissioner Mesmar. So if anyone's looking to volunteer or wants to do some late spring cleaning to get ready for maybe some back-to-school, hate to mention that with all the students here, but it is just about that time. Next item on the upcoming events is going to be, of course, Blues on the Hill, Saturday, August 16th, starting at 7:00 PM at McKelvey Park. One of the interesting things I learned this week about Geneva Magnus and Evelyn Rubio is it's going to be the first time, apparently, in the history of Blues on the Hill that the main performers will all be females. So a big step forward for women's rights in the arts. So I'm sure everyone will be interested in showing up for that with their lawn chairs, and of course, there'll be refreshments and food available on-site. Also, coming up later in August, on Saturday, August 30th, from 2:00 to 3:00, again, this is at the Public Library, there's going to be a special diabetes awareness type of workshop and information opportunity. There's going to be some presentations. Valley Baptist Medical Center is partnering in on this. So there'll be a lot of information about lifestyle changes, treatment, the latest information on exercise, medications, diets. If you're seeking more information about that, you can contact the Harlingen Public Library, again, at (216) 5821 or (216) 5809. Again, that is another free opportunity for our local residents and citizens, and they're welcome to attend. Thank you.
Dave, you forgot about the new chance we got on Harlingen. The White Wings has a new chance for the 40 years. Took 40 years to get the chance. So the good news is that they're going to play the finals over here on Harlingen three days. They're going to play two days on forward, and three days they're going to play over here on Harlingen.
I know. I sent a photo from that press conference to the Chamber and the Valley Morning Star, so there'll be more on the Chamber website and hopefully in the paper tomorrow with all the details on the schedule and the ticket prices and everything.
Thank you, Dave.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Item two is board recognition. We have, I'd like to recognize Ernesto Flores, who's an incoming member of our Construction Board of Justices. Ernesto, come on up, please. This is an interesting board that helps keep our community cleaned up and helps with making sure that we deal with properties that need to be dealt with and also certain special adjustments that need to be made. And we appreciate your voluntary to serve on this important board. And so we thank you for your service and congratulate you for working on that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Please, Commissioner Sánchez's appointed.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ernesto.
Okay. Thank you. And next item on the agenda is the presentation of a proclamation proclaiming Supergirl's Fast Pitch Softball Day in the city of Harlingen. And so we'd like to ask the coaches, Coach Jason Montalva-Or, and the assistant coach, Sam Ramirez, come on out and bring the players up and any parents that want to come. Ladies, if you'll just look in that direction and here, and they're going to take some pictures of you. But you all look great in your uniforms, and we want to take a minute to read this proclamation for you in honor of each and every one of you and your team and your coaches. Whereas it's come to the attention of the city of Harlingen that a local group of 10-year-old girls, they don't care, known as the Supergirl's Fast Pitch Softball Team, based out of the Harlingen National Bronco League, traveled to Lubbock, Texas to compete in the Pony National World Series. And whereas through the guidance and direction of Coach Jason Montalva-Or, assistant coaches and adult volunteers of the Supergirl's team have given up their time, patience, skills, and talents coaching and preparing them for competition in the Pony National World Series from July 15th through July 19th, 2014, and experienced a successful young baseball season. Whereas we realize that participation in organized athletics helps build character and teaches a wholesome sense of good sportsmanship among our youth. And whereas to really excel in any one sport, a young person must demonstrate, in addition to a great deal of natural ability, an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work. And whereas a striking example of this is the achievement of the Supergirl's team, where we're undefeated, eight and zero, and became the Pony National Champions for the second time in two years. Now, therefore, I'm Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, to hereby proclaim August 6th, 2014, as Supergirl's Fast Pitch Softball Team Day in the city of Harlingen, and on behalf of the City Commissioners, recognize and express the city's congratulations to the coaches, parents, especially to the Supergirl's Fast Pitch Softball Team based out of the Harlingen National Bronco League, and urge all citizens to join with our city in recognizing the work and dedication of these outstanding athletes and extend our best wishes for continued success. So on behalf of the entire city, we congratulate you for representing your city well and representing yourselves and winning in this great achievement in Lubbock. And so we also want to recognize, especially the coaches, because we know it takes a lot of effort, a lot of time to work with you to make you the best that you can be in this sport. And also the parents, who I'm sure a few of you drove to Lubbock. It's a long way from Harlingen, Texas, even though you did get to see the Buddy Holly statue, maybe. It's a long way. It's a long way to Lubbock. It's a lot of work involved in supporting these girls, and we know how much goes into it. It's a great honor for the city of Harlingen to be able to play a small part in being able to provide some fields for you to play in and work in. So congratulations to all of you. And the coaches want to say anything?
I just wanted to say that these girls were awesome this summer. We really, we built all year long for this. We had lots of stumbles along the way. We definitely didn't go undefeated through every single week in the tournament throughout the whole entire year. We had a lot of downs, but when it came to the big one, to the big show, to the big dance, these girls pulled through and went undefeated. And I'm just so proud of them, and I'm so honored to be their coach. And I just want to thank all the parents as well. It's a big sacrifice. All of us have several other kids to deal with as well, and to do the balancing act of taking them all to their different practices, whatever they're involved in, it's very difficult. And I just want to say thank you to all the parents for their dedication as well. This wouldn't have been possible without the parents. And thank you to the city of Harlingen for providing the facilities, taxpayers, providing the facilities that we get to practice and to play in, to develop the youth, and to prepare them for their future. Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two.
All right. That was the best part of our meeting. Item four is the approval of the minutes regular meeting through May 16, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections?
Yeah, I have a typo to correct under item 15, the last sentence. There should be the letter D on the word utilize. Should be utilized.
Any other corrections or additions? Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Consider today correction. So, Mayor?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, like signed, motion carries. Item six, consider to take action to approve recommendation of Scott Gibbs, insurance consultant with the group Sebel's William Health Insurance for employees, health and group insurance for fiscal year 2014, '15. Scott?
I'll just make a note that Commissioner Castillo has filed a notice of abstention on this item and has stepped out of the room.
Thank you.
Mayor Boswell, Ms. Yurina, Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. We're going to talk about, I've got two items to discuss. The first is the medical marketing analysis for the health plan for this plan year for 2014 and '15. This is just a table of contents of what we'll go over today. I'll talk a little bit about the current plan history, overview of the process, talk about the fully insured medical analysis, look at a total cost medical analysis, and then recommendations, and then I'll take any questions or comments that you might have. Feel free, if you have any questions during the presentation, you want to stop me. I'm glad to answer any questions along the way as well. So the current plan history. So in the insurance world, we always look at things, what we call a loss ratio, and I think you've heard me talk about this before, and that is the amount of claims that the carrier pays out to the premium that they take in. So our loss ratio from May 1st, 2013, through April 30th, 2014 is a 95% loss ratio. So Blue Cross paid out about 4.7 million in claims, and they took in premium of about 5.0 million. The federal government sets up a standard for loss ratios for the carriers for a large group, which is 100 or more. It has to be 85% so the carriers can't, you know, go to an 80%. They basically have to, according to the new law, be at less than a 15% cost for administrative services. So basically, 85% of your costs that you pay to them has to go to claims, and claims-related issues, only 15% or more can go to admin. So typically, we see that they want about 86%, you know, typically is what their request is. So you can see, running at 95%, there is definitely higher than what the expected loss ratio is that they would have, which would deem typically that you would get a renewal with an increase, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So also, our loss ratio from May 1st, 2012, to April 30th, 2013 was actually 102%. So for that timeframe, they actually paid out more in claims than they took in in premium. We do have, currently have about six claims that are currently over $50,000, so we do have some high claim activity. And I just kind of lightened this out before, just so you kind of know where we are running from a Blue Cross standpoint as we go in to talk about the renewals. So overview of the process. The request for proposals for fully insured, partially self-funded medical plans was released on May 28th, 2014. Questions were due on the 10th of June. The deadline was June 24th. Copies of the proposals were forwarded to myself, and then I'm here tonight to present a recommendation to the City Commission. The fully insured medical analysis, the fully insured responses that we got were from Blue Cross Blue Shield, from TML, Texas Municipal League. However, their increase came in at 29%, so they were not competitive. We did get a quote from United Healthcare and Valley Baptist. We did get declinations from Aetna and from Humana, primarily because right now their negotiated provider contracts are not as aggressive as the other carriers in the Valley, and they did not feel like they could be competitive at this time. Blue Cross Blue Shield's our current vendor. They matched current plan designs with minor alterations. The initial renewal option came in at about a 19.5% increase. It moved down to about 7.8% with minor alterations to the plan. I have feedback from staff that the employees have been pretty happy with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We haven't had any complaints. They're happy with the network access and with the customer service that they're being provided. So when you look at this, what I've highlighted here is just the areas that Blue Cross has changed on the three plans. We would still continue to offer the Plan 750, the Plan 1,000, and the Plan 500. The Plan 750 and the Plan 1,000 would still continue to be, the employee-only cost would still continue to be picked up by the city at 100%, and then the dependent rates would be at 50% the city would pick up. So the only change is that they have added a per-admission deductible. So if you went into the hospital, you would pay a $250 copay each time you went into the hospital. The co-insurance maximums actually stayed the same. I did list them here, though, because one thing that is different is with the Affordable Care Act is that all copays now, except the RX, will apply towards the out-of-pocket maximum. So in the past, all your physician office visits and things of that nature would not apply to the out-of-pocket maximum, but now the federal government requires that they do go to the out-of-pocket maximum. And then really, the only other change that they made to the plan is they put a $500 emergency room copay on versus right now, we have a $150 on the $750 plan, a $50 copay on both the 1,000 and the $500 plan. So the bulk of the benefits, you know, 80% of our population are typically using the benefits for physician office visits and for prescription drugs, so there's no changes to those copays at all. So with this, Blue Cross was able to come in with an increase of about 7.8%. As we said, they started at a 19.5% and they came to a 7.8%. So again, mainly two minor changes that are decrements to the employees, but then also with the copays going towards the out-of-pocket maximum, that works into the favor of the employees. So United Healthcare, they offered multiple plan options. The increases ranged from 19.5% to 4.76%. On that 4.76%, we'll talk about it, there were pretty significant plan changes to that. We did, on all three plans, we went out, on the two other carriers, we went out with our top 135 providers to see what kind of provider match they had. So they did have a 97% provider match on the top 135 providers. I do know, however, Harlingen Medical Center and NAP Regional are not in the UHC network right now. I just simply point that out because that's come up before in the past. So with the United Healthcare plans, the first option that they offered was, it was a 9.38% increase as opposed to the Blue Cross. This one did, we did see changes to the individual co-insurance maximums. It was 2,750, for the $750 plan, it's 2,750 in-network and 5,500 versus currently where our out-of-pocket maximum's 2,000, 4,000. For the Plan 1,000, it goes to 3,000, 6,000. That out-of-pocket maximum, again, is 2,000, 4,000. And then for the Plan 500, it is currently 2,000, 4,000. It would go to 2,500, 5,000. Again, all copays would go towards that out-of-pocket maximum. And then another area that would be different is the skilled nursing facility and the home healthcare. Currently, under the Blue Cross plan, those are covered at 100% in-network, considered 100% in-network after deductible, whereas on this plan, it would be 80%. They did change, the current drug plan is a 525, 550. They did increase the generic drug up to $10 on each of the plans. So this would represent about a 9.38% increase across the board. The second plan that they offered, again, was a 4.76% plan, again, less than where we are with Blue Cross, but pretty significant plan changes to the plans. You can see, the out-of-pocket maximum goes on the 750 plan to 3,250 and 6,500 versus the 2,000, 4,000. Goes to 3,500 and 7,000 for the 1,000 R plan, and for the 500 R plan, it goes to 3,000, 6,000. All the copays go up. They go up by $5. And then the urgent care goes up from 75. It stays the same on the, stays the same on the $500 plan, but it goes up on the others. And again, they increased the RX. So even though it's a 4.76% increase, it's really not comparing like plans to like plans. Valley Baptist came in, they offered two HMO plan alternatives. They could not match the current plans of a PPO. In a preferred provider plan, you have in-network and out-of-network benefits that you can access as an employee. Under this plan, the HMO plan, it's strictly an in-network plan, mainly to the Valley. They do have wrap plans outside if you, you know, have kids that live elsewhere. We had Valley Health Plans in the past, I think it was three years ago, four years ago. So theirs resulted in about a 5.49% increase. They do not, again, no out-of-network benefits, and their provider match on our top 135 was about a 73% match, which is pretty, it's pretty low. We would definitely have some disruption amongst the employees from a provider standpoint. So these are the benefits, and again, they did, you know, instead of having three plans, it would go down to two plans. It would be a 700, the first plan would be an 80% co-insurance plan after your deductible, which would be 750 for an individual, 1,500 for a family. The out-of-pocket maximums would match at 2,000, 4,000. Again, they matched most of the other components of the plan. We had a $25 copay for primary care physician, 35 for specialist, $75 emergency room copay, the $150 ER copay. The drug for them would be a 103560, which right now, we currently offer a 52550. The 1,000 R plan would be a $1,000 deductible, again, an 80% co-insurance, $1,000 individual, 2,000 family. The out-of-pocket maximum would be 2,000, 5,000. Would have a $15, $25 copay, $45 urgent care, and then a $50 emergency room copay. Again, the ER would be 103560. And this plan is about a 5.5% increase as opposed to the 7.8 with Blue Cross, but again, you know, we would definitely have some disruption in the network, and there is no out-of-network benefit, you know, for the employees. So with that, looking at the medical cost analysis, currently, we're paying, our total bill to Blue Cross is about 5.4 million. The flat renewal with no changes was about a 19.5% increase or an increase of about a million to the city. The option one that Blue Cross provided was a 7.8% increase. It's about 423,000. You know, depending on how our dependents come out, the split, you know, the city would pick up their portion. So that 423 is across the board. Then with United Healthcare, the first option that they provided is about a $500,000 increase. For their second option, it would be about a $258,000 increase. And for Valley Baptist, it would be about a $300,000 increase. So with that, looking at everything, my recommendation would be to remain fully insured with Blue Cross, make the minor plan changes. Again, you're not affecting the bulk of your population. It is a 7.8% increase, and there would be no disruption to the employees. Currently, as I said, the employees are very happy with Blue Cross from a provider access standpoint and from a customer service standpoint. So I'll be glad to take any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Scott?
Yeah, a 7.8% increase. Who will be bearing the cost? Is it the city and employee? City, employee?
It'll be both. The city, I think the, I want to say that the split right now is about 75%, 25% in the total.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, so the city-
So the ratio will remain-
Exactly. The ratio will remain the same. What we would continue to do is we would offer the 750 and the 1,000 R plan. We would, the employees would pay zero for that, and then anybody that has dependent coverage would go up by the 7.8%.
And I think current law, law is children 26 and younger can still be on the plan.
Absolutely. And this does comply with all ACA. It's got the fees in it and everything, so.
So basically, what this is, is that 15% over our past plans?
It is. It is. And basically, the renewal probably would justify for a little higher, but with the plan design changes, it's getting you down, down here, so.
Okay, you said that. I started doing the math.
Right.
Any other question?
If you have a question, you said the top 135 providers. Is that hospitals, doctors?
It's combined. And what we do is we typically will pull, it could vary, we typically pull a report and we kind of go down where we see there's a pretty big gap in a break between the number of, the number of actual visits and the number of claims cost, claim dollars that go there.
And that's within the plan participants.
That's just your plan participants. Yes, sir.
So the recommendation will result in about $125,000 more than the next bid.
Right.
And, but with a richer plan for that $125,000. And then also the benefit, I think there's certainly benefit to the employees not having to do the switch. That's always-
Yes, sir.
You know, that's always a potential issue. And so it's easier just to maintain the same plan. So there's a cost, and it's actually a cost involved in changing plans, so we're benefiting from not having to do that.
Sure.
So with that, is there a motion to accept the consultant's recommendation and to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield's plans recommended?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation to stay with the Blue Cross Blue Shield.
And I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, consider to take action to approve the recommendation of Scott Gibbs, insurance consultant.
Thank you.
the number of, the number of actual visits and the number of claims cost, claim dollars that go there.
And that's within the plan participants?
That's just your plan participants, yes, sir.
So the recommendation will result in about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars more than the next bid.
Right.
And, but with a richer plan for that hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then also the benefit, I think there's certainly benefit to the employees not having to do the switch, that's always.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's always a potential issue. And so it's easier just to maintain the same plan. So there's a cost, and it's actually a cost involved in changing plans, so we're benefiting from not having to do that.
Sure.
So with that, is there a motion to accept the consultant's recommendation and to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield's plans recommended?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation to stay with the Blue Cross Blue Shield.
And I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, consider take action to approve the recommendation of Scott Gibbs, insurance consultant, with group Seagulls and Williams on the cafeteria plan, section one twenty-five of the distribution and voluntary products for fiscal year 2014, 2015.
Mayor, Mr. Rena, commissioners, thank you again. I'm going to talk a little bit now about the cafeteria plan and the voluntary products. And again, please remember, these products, the city does not pay anything towards these products, they're strictly voluntary products that the employees can elect to choose. As part of it, right now, Colonial, our current vendor, they do pick up the cost for the section one twenty-five, the cafeteria plan, and the flexible spending accounts, and that's built in there. So with that overview of the process, the request for proposal for cafeteria plan slash voluntary benefits was released on June twenty-fourth. Questions were due July seventh, the deadline was July fifteenth. Copies of the proposals were forwarded to myself, and then I'm here August sixth to present the recommendation. The current plans, I just show you this to let you know kind of where we are, and you can see, I mean, we do have participation, we don't have some, as much participation as some of the other plans, but as of right now, and when you think about this, these policies could be on, these policies could be on an employee, they could be on a spouse, they could be on dependents. So the current plan, the accident plan, we have about two hundred policies, two hundred people that are taking that. The accident care plan, which provides coverage if you have an accident, as well as thirteen policies. Disability is our short-term disability plan, we have about ninety-nine policies. The cancer plan, we have about ninety-three policies, and then on the critical illness, we have about seventy-five policies. Again, the benefits are paid one hundred percent by the employees. So with that, when you look at this, we really only had two people that offered to continue to pay for the section one twenty-five plan and the flexible spending plan, so it kind of narrowed the field, and it's really Colonial, which is our current vendor, and Aflac, which is our other vendor. So you can see that Colonial quoted on everything with the FSA plan, Aflac quoted with the FSA plan. We did have other quotes from other plans in there, but none of them quoted and offered to pay for the flexible spending account. And then we did take quotes for a new benefit that the employees were asking for, which is long-term disability, and I'll talk about that when we get there. So the top three accident responses, currently, we have Colonial, and that's the renewal plan. What the accident plan pays, it pays just that, if you have an accident, it pays you a cash benefit for that. You know, some of these plans, I'm going to have rates up here, some, they're age-based rates, so there would be way too many to put up here, but I wanted to kind of at least talk about the benefits. So between the Colonial plan and the Aflac plan, very similar plans. The Aflac plan's a little bit more expensive, but it's actually got a little bit richer benefit associated with it. So, and again, we've had Aflac before in the past, prior to Colonial, we, employees had Aflac, so it's kind of a known, you know, a known commodity as well. But the accidental, you know, death benefit under Colonial would pay twenty thousand to an employee, twenty thousand to a spouse, or four thousand to a child. Under the Aflac plan, the insurer spouse would get forty thousand dollar benefit, the child would get twelve-five. The ambulance benefit is a hundred and twenty per accident for Colonial, it's two hundred for Aflac, and you can see the other variables. So very similar plans, Aflac's probably a little bit richer on this plan. And again, these are state-file plans, so you're never going to have two that look exactly alike, so I said that. And then the critical illness plan, very similar, again, with Colonial and with Aflac. The benefits are going to play, pay, you can see, the employee elects the amount, and then if they have a heart attack, a stroke, a major organ transplant, or permanent paralysis, the benefit pay, the benefits pay at that level. And again, the critical illness rates are age-banded rates, usually five-year rates, and smoker, non-smoker, so, but they're very, again, very similar rates. The top three cancer responses, again, you've got Colonial and you've got Aflac. You can see the cancer screening benefit, seventy-five dollars. First diagnosis benefit for Colonial's a thousand, for Aflac it's four thousand, for employees' spouse eight thousand, for a child. You can see the radiation benefit, the surgical benefit, again, you know, you can see the rates down there, you know, for the plans. Short-term disability, again, currently, and the short-term disability gets even crazier with rates because you get to choose your elimination period, so you can choose either a zero-seven, a seven-seven, which basically means, you know, accident and sickness benefit. Again, the plans are very, are very similar, the costs are very similar.
Do the definitions or own oc?
Yeah, it would be, the definitions are, I'll put that up there, yeah, the definitions, I think on both of them would be our own occupation for two years, and then any oc after that, so. The long-term disability is a plan we don't have offered right now. It is a plan that we've gotten feedback on from the employees that they would like to see this benefit offered. I personally think it's a very important benefit, benefit to round out, even offering the STD. And again, it's at no cost to the city to offer. And you can see, we had basically, the top two are Unum and Hartford. The Unum plan actually came in at a much better benefit, it came in at a better benefit, and it came in at a lower rate. So the benefit percentage would be sixty percent of your annual income. The monthly maximum will be eight thousand dollars. The elimination period would be ninety or a hundred and eighty days, we would make that selection. Again, that would butt up against your STD, whatever you chose on your STD. The own oc is twenty-four months. The definition of a disability would be a residual to your own oc with regular oc following that, regular occupation. The survivor benefits, three times the gross monthly benefit paid in a lump sum. Mental illness is covered for twenty-four months. Self-reported symptoms, self-reported symptoms would be something like chronic fatigue, fibromyalgia, something of that. The plans still pay, would pay for twenty-four months for that. You can see the rehabilitation benefit as well. One thing about the Unum plan, too, is it does include an EAP as well, an employee assistance program for the employees, and they did guarantee their rate for two years.
Unum primarily is a disability insurance company.
Yes, sir.
Whereas Hartford has different ranges.
Has different ranges, yes. And Unum, that is all they do is life and disability, and they're the largest disability in the nation, so. The flexible spending account, you can see that Colonial quoted and Aflac quoted, again, very similar, there would be no charge assessed to the city, they would be picked up and borne by Colonial and Aflac. So with that, you know, the recommendation, you know, after visiting with staff, we did have some complaints when we did the two thousand and twelve employee survey with Colonial based on their customer service. Staff has not been very happy with the customer service that's been provided by Colonial, and that comes back to answering the phones, returning phone calls, things of that nature. So my recommendation is to recommend moving the existing coverages to Aflac. They're a known commodity, we had Aflac prior to Colonial, and then I would recommend adding the Unum long-term disability plan.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of consultant?
I think there are motions to approve.
Second?
For the second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Scott, thank you again for all your help, it's good to have somebody to read these policies for us.
Well, I appreciate it, and as always, appreciate working with you guys, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Item A, public hearing, consider ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow bar lounge in general retail district located at eighteen twenty-one B, West Tower, Avenue of Mary, legal description, block one, block one roadway, and subdivision, applicant is Mohammed Choudhury.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge out of an existing three thousand square foot building that's located on the corner of Tyler Avenue and P Street. This is a subject property, it's actually next to the McCopain Hotel. This is a subject building, it's generally the hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday from four PM to two AM, and on Sunday from four PM to twelve midnight. This is the view you're looking at from the north, north side of the property, if you're located from the east side and then the west side. Subject building has generally been vacant for the past two years. The previous use was an internet cafe, prior to the internet cafe, it was a bar lounge, and then prior to that, it was a restaurant. Request was reviewed by the building inspection department, fire prevention, health department, and police department. Building and fire prevention had no objections to the specific use permit request. The health department did not approve the request at this point as a lack, due to not showing the required employed laboratory, mop sink, and hot water heater, however, that could have been addressed prior to their certificate of occupancy. Police department also reviewed the request, and is recommending that business provide a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, provide surveillance video with three-day retention of video, and sufficient lighting on the premises. They also issued on the reports showing that there was no cost for service at that site. Public hearing was conducted by P and Z commission, there was no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff did also notify the property owners within a two hundred-foot radius of the property, and did not receive any objections to requests. Staff and P and Z commission are recommending approval subject to the applicant providing the required parking, providing the required lighting, obtaining his proper permits, providing a licensed security guard, providing surveillance video, and compliance with appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions, and applicant is present for questions.
So we can pass this even though the building is shy on hygiene needs?
Right, that could be addressed prior to their certificate of occupancy.
Okay, and then, we approve this tonight, with that, who issues the certificate of occupancy?
Building inspection department.
So they would go and double-check, make sure it's.
Right, correct.
All that's there.
And the applicant is in agreement to comply with the requirements.
I think, I don't see any problem that we should approve that already, because that even comes two or three times already. There was a bar report that there.
Okay, I'm going to go to item A, which is public hearing, open public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this specific use permit? Is there anyone? Hearing now all close to public hearing, go to item B, consider take action to approve ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit at the vote mentioned described property, and I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance demanding the zoning ordinance, ordinance number zero seven eight twenty-seven, the city of Harlingen, New Hampshire, specific use permit to Mohammed Choudhury to allow a bar lounge in general retail GR district located at eighteen twenty-one B, West Tyler, bearing legal description of block one roadway, and street subdivision, subject two-one, providing a maintenance required on street parking spaces. Two, obtaining and maintaining the proper state TABC permits. Three, provide an employee laboratory and mop sink and specify the water heater location as per the health department. Four, provide and maintain the surveillance video in the parking lot and must maintain a thirty-day retention of the video. Five, providing and maintaining adequate lighting around all bar lounge, building entrance and exits. Six, providing a licensed security guard in the parking lot during peak hours of operation on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from nine PM to two AM, and seven, comply with the requirements administered by the planning, building, health, fire, and police department prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Providing for verification and ordaining other measures related to the fourth government.
Is there a motion about the ordinance on first reading?
I'm making a motion to approve this part, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider take action to propose a desired tax rate for fiscal year 2014, 2015, and schedule two public hearings to be held on Friday, August fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at eleven-thirty AM, and Wednesday, August twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, at five-thirty PM.
Good evening, mayor, commissioner, city manager. We have calculated the effective tax rate, which came in at point five seven seven five. Staff has prepared of the budget based on the current tax rate, which is point five eight eight two seven. If the commission recommends that rate today, we will have two public hearings. We see, it's not an increase in our current tax rate, but it is an increase to the effective tax rate. We'll have two public hearings on, like is mentioned, on August fifteenth and August twentieth. And once this is done, then we will vote for the tax rate in September. Now, the, just for added information, one cent change in the tax rate does equal to two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred, nine hundred and forty-eight in revenues. And this would be the sixth year that we have it at point five eight eight two seven. Prior to that, it was fifty-nine cents. It was fifty-nine cents for quite a few years, so we have not had an increase in taxes. Staff recommends the point five eight eight two seven, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Our budget is based on the point five eight.
Yeah, we talked about this yesterday at the workshop.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the proposed desired tax rate for fiscal year 2014, fifteen at point five eight 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 two seven?
Yes, sir.
And to schedule the two hearings for Friday, August fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, eleven-thirty, and August twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, at five-thirty? Can you say, make that motion?
I'll make that motion, that we approve the, just continue with existing tax rate and hold the two public hearings.
And it's, to clarify, we're just proposing it, so sometimes people get confused, they think we're passing the tax rate already, but it's just a proposal, so that we can continue with the budget process.
Correct.
And then we will publish it in the paper, and then we'll hold the public hearings, and it'll be passed.
That's your motion to propose?
My motion's that we consider the proposed tax rate and schedule the two public hearings.
There's magic language involved.
Yes, sir, and that's correct.
In doing this, and so that's why we're trying to be careful about it. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? Other than, we think it's, we think we, we're glad that we can maintain the tax rate as is and not raise it, so we're pleased with staff's ability to propose a budget that will use the same tax rate. Is there a, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, thank you. Item ten, consider take action to declare the itemized list of non-real estate, personal property as surplus personal property as recommended by staff and authorize city personnel to conduct a public auction of said property on August thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, once a year, we hold a city auction. First, the list must be declared a surplus, that's what you have before you. This includes Water Works, Air Court, and Housing Authority. They do come in with us, and we hold one auction to save money. And once this is declared, then we will schedule it for August thirtieth. There's no cost to the city as far as the auctioneer, fees, they come off the top of the sales. And staff is recommending approval.
You have a question?
Yes, sir.
We've done this local auction prior, how long have we done this, through the internet or an internet service?
The police department is the only one that started doing it on the internet. I haven't seen too much success with it, we wanted to try that first, but this option that we have has a lot of the small stuff that we felt wouldn't be sold on the internet.
I saw a lot of small ticket items and.
And this is the only way.
One ink cartridge or something.
Yes, or office supplies, I mean, you know, and with this option, the citizens already know, they come to it, and it's more successful, I believe, than trying to sell these items on the internet.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt staff's recommendation?
So, mayor.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item eleven, consider take action to approve our service agreement to replace the nineteen seventy-nine contract with East Street Honda Water Supply Corporation.
Thank you, mayor. Little history here, the, there's been a longstanding contract with East River Honda, with Harlingen Water Works, or the city of Harlingen, going back to nineteen seventy-nine. And the charter clearly states that any new wholesale contract has to be approved by the city commission, so we're bringing this to you today. Historically, East River Honda took a significant amount of water from Harlingen as it was evolving. But a few years ago, they developed the North Cameron Authority with the North Adamo Water Supply Corporation and the city of Primera, and when that was developed, that's the RO plant out around Santa Rosa, they interconnected their systems and they raised their pressures. And when that was raised, basically, they could no longer take water from us because they were operating at a higher pressure. They have to operate at a higher pressure because they're transporting water twenty miles, and whereas a concentrated city, we don't have to do that. So they were, basically, the last few years, taking very minimal water from us. Last year's drought issue and the pushwater issue that you heard so much and read so much about that affected the city of Raymondville and others, this affected East River Honda significantly. And so therefore, their raw water provider to their five-ten plant could not get water to them. They had plenty of water rights, they had plenty of water, it just couldn't get to them because of the pushwater issue. Fortunately, hard. Fortunately, Harlingen, we do not have that issue because of our protected Harlingen irrigation district. We don't have those losses and don't have that situation. But at that time, Eastern O'Hondo began exploring alternatives for additional sources of water to prevent that happening again. They approached us and we started negotiations, and basically what they wanted to do was just add another point of contact at the existing contract on the eastern part of our system, and just diplomatically said, let's negotiate. And so we now developed a take-or-pay with a higher rate. Basically, it's the same rate as our retail citizens pay, which is a good bit higher than their existing rate. And there's conditions and limitations to it. So therefore, we now have a take-or-pay where they were, their minimum, they will be billed at least 100,000 gallons per day, or 3 million gallons per month, minimum, whether they take it or not, and they can take up to 2.5 billion gallons a day, which we can easily provide to them. So it's, I think it's a win-win for both entities. It gives us a point of new customer in an area that we need some volume or some usage, and it certainly helps out at a local utility. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Are we talking raw water?
No, potable water.
Potable water.
This is potable water. It's connected to, and the reason it works here, this new connection would be what they're trying to get water to supply to, more towards their 510 plant in the eastern portion. Their historic connections are at Combs to us. They want to be able to move water towards their more core customers, which is more along the eastern part of the county and their 510 area, in the event they can't get raw water to 510. So it's, no, it's just potable water. It's, they would be a potable water customer like any other customer of Harlingen, except there's a minimum, and they have to pay a minimum amount of what's in the industry called a take-or-pay. And there's some axes. Now, if they're going to take more than the guaranteed amount that we are obligated to give them, then they will furnish the water rights to do so. And there's conditions in here where if they cannot furnish the water rights, then we can get, there's a 20 cent per thousand gallon surcharge. So it's a little more convoluted than the existing contract, but we really feel it's much better contract than we have now with any of our existing wholesale customers.
So the pressure gradient is less?
Yes, but they're going to...
Towards the use of their system where we would tie into them?
I'm glad you mentioned that, because now, the new point of source, they're gonna construct a pretty major connection line and build a booster station, so they can now take our water and elevate it to their pressure to pump it into their system. That's not our responsibility. They will do that completely on their network.
Is there any concern of their pressure gradient being higher, that they would back flush into our system?
No, this will be the only connection we have. So, I mean, if they did, basically, it's in their benefit not to do that, because it's, again, potable water. It's our water that's treated, and, but that would be very unlikely. I mean, we do have another, the existing connection at Combs, but there's backflow devices to prevent that, because any, all of our wholesale customers don't want to pay for the water twice, they want to just take it.
Really?
No.
So they're gonna guarantee 36 million a year. What are they using right now for us?
No, they're, what, yeah, 3,000 a month, yes.
Right, 36 million a year.
Gallons, not much.
Gallons, gallons. And so what is their current usage?
Oh, they, they have 7,500 connections, so their consumption is eight or nine million gallons a day. Well, about, I'd say, well, right now.
What are they drawing from us currently?
Nothing.
This is, nothing?
Nothing.
This is a taker, right? They don't draw a crop, they still get billed for 3 million gallons?
Yes, under this contract. Under our existing contract, they pay $100 a month.
Okay.
So that's the reason we've had a long period of negotiation.
Right. That's the reason I'm asking the question. So this is additional revenue for your water work?
Yes, it's additional revenue. Basically, it'll be about $5,000 per month. But historically, if you go back 10 years, they took significantly more water than this. Because we were a major source of their water until they constructed the North Cameron Authority and built that plant and boosted their pressures. And they suddenly, it sort of, they cut themselves off from us. Not unwittingly, but just unintentionally, but it just happened. Because they've always wanted to have our connection as a backup source.
Backup source.
And they wanted this contract to continue to be nothing but a backup source. They don't want it, they do not want to take anything. But we insisted that we, here, this works both ways, so let us negotiate a take-or-pay, and they understood that.
So we have enough raw water, water rights, and the ability to process the water?
Absolutely. And actually, they're gonna pay an impact fee for the amount of water that we are guaranteeing, which is only 200,000 gallons a day. Any water in excess of that, they will convey their water rights to us, so that any consumption over that amount will not be credited or assessed against our water rights. But we have, we have more than adequate water rights currently.
Because we have push water to get our water rights to the plant, whereas sometimes they may not.
Exactly. And our system, the Harlingen Irrigation District's conveying system, is so efficient that we don't have, we have no push water issues, such as some of the other irrigation districts do. They have the Delta and San Diego, some of the others just, they can't, because they, they're conveying water through major lakes and risacas, and here, we have Narcanals. And it's just, we don't have the loss that they have.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the water service agreement?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, and I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. All right, thank you, Darrell.
Thank you very much.
Item 12, consider to take action to approve the adopted resolution on that strategic BH facility LLC as a Texas enterprise project pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303, Texas Government Code.
Mayor Commissioners, strategic behavioral health is proposing to build a psychiatric hospital in Harlingen, specific, it'll be about 52,000 per feet facility. They will cost about 13.9, an investment of about 13.9 million, which would include land, construction, and equipment, and they will create over 100-inch jobs in our community. They're asking that we support their effort to become an enterprise zone in the state of Texas. If you remember, we did one of those a couple of minutes ago, and basically, all it does, it allows them to be able to qualify for sales tax refunds on the state portion. So that means that the city would not actually lose any funding. Staff has reviewed the information and is recommending that the commission approve the request.
Okay, is there a motion to approve and adopt a resolution on that in this company's enterprise zone project?
So, Lou.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. All right, this is a great project for our community, and it's another way to support that project, so, thank you. Item 13, consider to take action to approve a contract with the City of Harlingen and Texas AgriLife Research, member of the Texas A&amp;M University System, for acceptance and administration of a sub-recipient grant for lower Laguna Madre regional treatment of wetland system Phase 1, authorize the city to contest the contract.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, City Manager. You have before you is an agreement between AgriLife Research, they're a member of the Texas A&amp;M University, and the City of Harlingen. And what this is, is to construct or actually improve the wetlands at the Ramsey Park. And it's a grant, it's $140,000, and it's 100%, there's no match from the city. In the agreement that you have before you, we made a few changes after we presented it. And the two changes that we made was to, on the indemnification clause, we made a mutual indemnification clause, and we, I worked with Mr. Bilby, and also on the governing law article, we also made a change to that.
Okay, this is a, this is a good project. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the contract.
So.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. All right, good work on this.
Thank you.
This'll be another help to approve that great park that we have out there. Item 14, consider to take action to approve a one-year renewal contract between the City of Harlingen and Harlingen Professional Baseball LLC for the use of field facilities at the Harlingen Field.
Mayor Commissioners, this here is a, the contract for Harlingen Professional Baseball versus the White Wings was adopted or executed back in May 7, 2013. And in the agreement, under the term, there was a, there's a clause in there that requires us to notify them of our intent to renew it. There's a three-year contract, but with two options for renewal, with a one-year primary term, and then two options for renewal. Well, we didn't send them a notice, and we didn't formally come to the city commission to request a renewal. So that's why I'm here before you today, is to get authorization to renew this for one more year. We have three months in the second, or first term, or first option, I should say. So what I would like to do is, if we, if y'all grant me permission, send them a notice saying, you know, we did renew it, or we did approve the renewal for one more year. And then next year, we'll come for you again for the second option for renewal, which is the third, the third year in the agreement.
And it might understand they are current.
That wasn't me, my question is, everything good, so, I mean, that's, I think that was the reason we put those terms in there, just to renew it.
They're current, and actually, this is, we're in the first year option now, so our new parks director spotted that during the transition, apparently it was not picked out by the prior director, and so we're trying to get this corrected, just, you know, paper-wise, get a document so that everything's clear. And in the fall, we'll probably come back to you on that second year option, so, just to get things in order, so.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and say, allow this to happen, so that we can get them back to official.
We have a second.
Second, second.
And they're, and they're winning, so we're all...
No, we're not.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 15, consider to take action to approve a contract between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen Football League HCE for the use of designated fields at Victor Park.
Mayor, City Commissioners, this is a new lease for one more year for the Harlingen Youth Football League. They use the fields over at the Victor Park. They've been there for six years already. They're current, they've been very successful, and staff recommends that we issue a, the new search of use agreement.
I'm making a motion to...
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Item 16, consider to take action to authorize the mayor to renew the City Harlingen's account with the Texas Facilities Commission Federal Surplus Property Program, and to authorize Assistant City Manager of External Services, that's the ACMES. Authorized or represented.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
ACMES, as opposed to the ACM.
We have purchased federal surplus vehicles and equipment in the past. We need to renew our account with them. Staff is recommending approval. I believe PD, our police department, is looking to buy a couple of traders from them already for a very good price. We have bought some very good equipment from them in the past. The staff is recommending approval.
So there's no downside?
There's no downside.
I make a motion, we approve this. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 17, consider to take action to approve an ordinance of first reading amending Chapter 111, Section 111.02, permit requiring, requiring by adding Section C8, E, and F to allow mobile food vendors to operate at fixed locations in certain zoning districts and allow permitted food service establishments to have outdoor grilling under certain conditions and allow businesses to secure food permit, allow them to grow food under certain conditions.
Mayor Commissioner, City Manager, about two and a half years, this ordinance was amended to allow mobile food vendors to operate in the city. Section C8 will allow them to operate in other zoning except residential and multifamily. Initially, it was only, they were supposed to operate in general retail zone areas, so this will allow them to operate in other zones. Section E will allow permitted restaurants to grill on Fridays through Sundays and federal holidays, as long as they stay on their property and out of right-of-ways. And a good example, this is the HEB on the expressway that was doing that. And Section F will allow businesses to get permit from the health department to grill on, from Fridays through Sundays and federal holidays, as long as they stay on their property and out of right-of-ways, if they have somebody that has received food safety training, and is present at all times, and no home-prepared foods are allowed. An example of this would be like a car dealership, they have a sales event going where they have hot dogs and that type of stuff. So these provisions will not apply to mobile food vendors or temporary food vendors. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, I ask the city attorney to read the caption. So...
An ordinance of the City of Harlingen, sections amending and adding provisions to Section 111.02 of the Harlingen City Code is amended by amending Section 111.02C8 to allow mobile vendors to operate from fixed locations in all zoning districts except residential and multifamily zones, adding Section 111.02E allowing permitted food service establishments that have an annual food permit to have recurring outdoor grilling from Fridays through Sundays and federal holidays without having to secure an additional food permit from the health department, with set outdoor grilling allowed on the business property only and not on public rights away, adding Section 111.02A allowing businesses that do not have a food permit to secure a permit to allow grilling food items Fridays through Sundays and federal holidays, as long as food items are not sold and meet the following criteria. One, outdoor grilling must be done on the business property and will not be allowed in public rights away. Two, at least one food service employee who has received food safety training, is a food protection manager or food handler, and who meets the requirements under this, under this chapter, is on-site at all food grilling times. And three, home-prepared food items will be strictly prohibited, and providing that added Section 111.02E and F shall not apply to mobile food vendors and temporary food vendors, providing for publication, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and ordaining other measures pertaining to the foregoing.
All right, my wife is very much in favor of this, so I hope you'll...
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve it.
She wants to see those outdoor, that ever grilled at HEB back.
Yes.
I guess that's a good thing. Is there a motion to approve the order?
I made that motion.
I'm making second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 18, consider to take action to appoint a member of the Harlingen City Commission to serve as the official representative and an alternate member to serve in the executive board of the Migos to buy fiscal year 2014, 15.
Mayor, Migo Delvay is asking for the city's appointment. Currently, we have Commissioner Sanchez that is, that is serving as the representative, and we have Commissioner Dab as the alternate, that's serving on the board.
Do you want to be the city's, the alternate?
No, I'll let you make the alternate. I'll be the alternate, no problem.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for Chino from four, to be the representative of the board.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, thank you all for performing at service. Item 19, board appointments, are there any board appointments?
I do. I need to reappoint John Givada to the Harlingen Community Improvement Board.
Is there a motion to approve board appointments? So, Lou, Mayor?
So, Mayor?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 20, citizen's communication.
We have no citizens signed yet.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our meeting. We are now adjourned. Thank you all for your participation.